Welcome, everybody. Spokane City Council Legislative Session for October 30th. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Sifter, do you want to do roll call?
Council President Kinnear.
Present.
Council Member Bingle.
Here.
Council Member Cathcart.
Present.
Council Member Ulrich.
Present.
Council Member Stratton.
Here.
Council Member Wilkerson.
Present.
Council Members Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. And we don't have any proclamations or salutations, but we do have a community report from the Health, Justice Recovery Alliance. So Jeanette and Mike and Carmen Pacheco-Jones, if you're here, please come on up. Welcome. Yep, right here, podium. Thank you.
Thank you, councilpersons, for having us here today. We represent a few of the staff members of the Health, Justice Recovery Alliance, a local nonprofit here in Spokane. We recently opened a wellness center that's located in Town and Country area, and it's fantastic because we're right next to a public bus stop. So we find ourselves to be easy to access for any clients that we may service.
And, Jeanette, you can go ahead and click through on that keyboard for the slides.
Health, Justice Recovery Alliance, we service everyone in Spokane, it seems like. No, but we start with, we have a special mental health department that focuses on zero to five, both the actual children themselves and their parents. And those individuals are able to come to our wellness center and receive mental health access from one of our providers right there. And that matches one of our primary goals of increasing access to stabilizing services. When you've experienced crisis or trauma, oftentimes being able to have access to a mental health provider can help you on that road to recovery. We see ourselves as a group that provides some transitionary services for individuals with varied behavioral health and addictive treatment paths, and they're able to enter into outpatient services at our wellness center. But we also have a transitional permanent housing program that allows mothers with young children who are on their road from transition, whether that's through various forms of trauma or crisis. It could be former incarceration, houselessness, drug addiction, and they're able to enter into one of our permanent housing facilities and receive peer support, mental health services, kind of walk through state services that will be available to them. They have access to live there over a year, which is pretty rare for this kind of environment. There's weekly group meetings, and we try to help them gain full stability so that as they transition out of our homes, they're able to have their own housing and provide for their children successfully. We also see ourselves as an aid in helping increase community resilience. We want Spokane to be a strong community where everyone, no matter what your background, your socioeconomic status, or what you've been through, you're able to provide back to Spokane, you're able to raise your families successfully, and gain, you know, that peace and stability that we all deserve. Some of the... I'm going to hand it over to one of the staff members, Desiree. She's going to talk a little bit about our crisis intervention because the slide is a little smaller, and she's amazing at this, so.
Sorry. So part of our crisis intervention is outreach, engagement, referral. So there's three steps in this, essentially. The outreach, engagement, referral, that's the referral that comes in. We then perform the intake assessment and needs assessment, and then care team planning. And that's the care team planning is when we send out peer supports. We also put them into three different categories: no risk, moderate risk, and high risk. With each of the risk categories, there's different needs for our community. Preventive resources, concrete goods, community peer support would all fall under that no risk. Those are the parents that just need a little extra support, they need a car seat, they need a safe sleeping, gas vouchers. Moderate risk would be service planning, peer support, healthcare navigation. Those are some of our community partners, community and parents that need help navigating these medical referrals, or court paperwork, or just need that extra peer support. And then high risk is home visiting, crisis recovery, and behavioral health support. And those are, that's the clients that come to us that need the extra care, that need behavioral health referrals, that need home visiting on a regular basis. With all three of those categories comes prevention. So we're preventing stressful situations, we're preventing parents and, you know, people in our community that are just, I don't know how to get this car seat, I don't know how to get to my appointment, or who to call for behavioral health. So with all three of those categories comes prevention.
Some other aspects of our community prevention plan are, we advocate for programs that strengthen economic support to families and individuals. And we do that within our organization. Nonprofits are based off donations and grants, and every one of our staff members is paid well above minimum wage and actually above Washington, like, livable wages. And so we see that from within our organization. How can we ask our peers to go out and support others unless they are being paid fairly? And we also support other organizations that move to make sure that citizens here in Spokane are making enough that they can provide their own housing and food for their children and be able to sustain themselves. We also honor cultural backgrounds, and we do this through various interpretation services and trying to reach with our clients on their level, understand where they're coming from, not erase the unique and beautiful cultural diversity we have here in Spokane. We like to support the parents on their level and provide community engagement opportunities. This last summer, we were able to partner with DCYF and receive a grant for a wonderful program that was supporting family engagement. And what it did is it provided grants with direct funds for positive experiences for families. We were able to service about 100 individual families on their summer dreams, and these dreams weren't huge. These are hardworking individuals with young children, trying to make it by without school, you know, having daycare, and they wanted to have one weekend at Wonderland. They wanted to go to the Garland Movie Theater with their children, and it's just not within that budget. We were able to provide positive enriching family-based experiences to individual families. It was a little over 100 individual families. Separate to that, we rotated to six different parks throughout Spokane City and held a community engagement fair. So it provided lunch to anyone free of charge. We had carnival games at one, we had pony rides at another, we had a scavenger hunt at one, and it was really amazing to see a father brought his kids, and he is a veteran, and he said, "I've never had a chance to just sit and do an activity with my kids and show them the skills that I gained in my military experience." So he had his compass, and they had their map, and they were able to, you know, find all the little caches that we had set out, and he said, "You know, we come to the park every weekend because it's free." And I didn't even know this was going on today, and it was so great to just be able to engage with my kids and share some of my expertise. Thank you for holding this. And we had stories like that every weekend where someone was like, "We come here every weekend because it's free, but this gave my kids a memory," and we really appreciate that. And so we are so honored to be able to partner with DCYF for that this summer and look forward to hopefully being able to make that an annual event. Other projects that we have have been working with postpartum doulas and mental health support specifically to women who have recently given birth, or birthing individuals. And I'm going to hand it over to Mike, and he's one of our community outreach specialists in our organization. He's going to talk a little bit about what he does with HJRA. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mike Maldonado. I'm with Health and Justice Recovery Alliance, project development coordinator as well as youth development. I also work with the Chad Street Medicine Outreach Team. That involves going out, meeting people right where they're at, whether that's out shelters, up underneath the bridge, whatever that situation may look like. We provide them with the resources such as medical attention, food, clothing, just stuff that others could take for granted. We provide those for them. I also have the privilege to work with single-parent fathers that, to help them navigate the system. I also have the privilege to work with the youth. These are, these are kids that anywhere from, from 12 to 15 years old that, where they don't have a role model, they don't have that male role model in their life. So I'm able to take them shopping, whether it's for school supplies, just take them out to lunch, take them out to wanderland, just do things what is normal to others. This is not normal for them. So just to be able to experience that with them and see the joy in these kids and just see the growth in them, whether it's setting goals, just setting, you know, what their dream, what their dream may be, I have that privilege of being able to do that. And one thing I will say is that one thing I love about this organization is that we meet people right where they're at, and we don't, we don't stall in it when we find out that there's a crisis. We're there within an hour, you know, or less, and that's one thing I do love about this organization. Thank you.
The last aspect we want to talk about is that our team that we work with at HJRA are built up of community health workers and certified peer counselors. And so these are individuals with lived experience, with co-concurring past crises, and they know what it's like to be there. And so it isn't patronizing, it's meeting individuals on the ground level, being able to say, "I've been where you are, and there's hope, and there's joy in your future, and there's a chance for you to be stable, giving back to Spokane, community member even." There's a lot of research that speaks out to positive life experiences in early childhood lead to resiliency in future traumas. And so that's one of our big goals, is to be able to provide the children that are at risk here in Spokane, those positive life experiences, and then meet those individuals that are currently going through traumas and assist them where they're at and in a positive direction. We want to thank you so much for letting us be able to come and present on our nonprofit, and we're really grateful for all the decisions that this council makes that continue to support Spokane and some of our most struggling citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions? Go ahead.
When was our organization established?
Our organization was originally established in 2017, I believe.
Very young.
Councilmember.
Just a quick question, if you have any idea of people served, how many, what's the number of people served in a year and six months?
Oh, gosh. It depends on the program. So in our residential programs, we have anywhere between six to 12 women with their families, and that's typically one infant, up to three older children. And so each household can have teens, number of individuals at a time. Our Summer Fun Program, each one of our park outings, we had about 50 families participate in our engagement there. And then, like I said, we had over 100 families that were able to receive individual donation. We get probably anywhere from five to 25 referrals a week. We're partnered with a lot of other nonprofit community organizations, and we know we could be servicing a lot more members of our community, but we're still small, we're still new, and we have some really exciting grants on the horizon that would allow us to provide further assistance to families that are just entering into CPS services and kind of be able to help walk them through what that process looks like and what reunification looks like. We also have a really exciting grant on the horizon to be able to bring a recovery and receiving center for youth that have experienced exploitation or at risk of to Spokane, which is amazing because we, there isn't one outside of King County at the moment. And so there's, within our organization and our partnerships, there's some really exciting things on the horizon. We also partner with a group of about six nonprofits here in Spokane that all service the zero to five age group, and each one of them have their own unique, specific thing that they service. And so we service those families in crisis, but we're able to meet together and say, "You do what you're really great at, and we're going to do what we're great at," and we're able to come together and receive large grant funding and distribute it to each of those six nonprofits. And so, yeah, we're really blessed to have our executive director, who couldn't be here tonight, Carmen Pacheco-Jones. She keeps her ear to the ground on Washington State and what Spokane County needs and really tries to find ways to bring that here to this county.
This was really helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Will you tell Carmen thank you for us?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
And Carmen and I go way back, so tell her Ryan says hi.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Thanks so much for coming down, we really appreciate, and best of luck in your endeavors. We wish you well. Anything we can do to help, let us know.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay. We're going to switch gears, we're going to have open forum, and we have 15 people who have not spoken before this month, and we're the first to sign up. I'm going to read your name, you'll be speaking tonight. Mikhail Slyusarov, Scott Ward, Elizabeth Gulak, Dave M., Laura Rens, Jessie Pedersen-Petersen, Khadeen Rockman, Zachary McGlocklin, Robert Richard, Mary Ann Torres, Quinn Childs, Terry Hill, Azailan Croft, Russell Webster, Derek Azaro, Paul Tina, Melanie Perry, and Andrea Bauer are the ones who will be speaking tonight. Just as a reminder, open forum, no clapping, cheering, or booing, no public outburst. It's a two-minute time limit for open forum, and then legislative is three minutes. It is also, you're going to address your remarks to me, and I want to make sure we remember this is mutual respect, so please treat each other as you wish to be treated. And finally, the state law does prohibit the use of city facilities, including city council meetings, for the promotion of a candidate for office. So with that, let's start with Mikhail, and I'm sorry if I mutilated the last name, Mikhail You have two minutes.
Hello, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you tonight. When I first heard that the Spokane City Council had rendered a declaration regarding the ongoing Israeli aggression towards Palestinians, I thought what I'm sure a lot of others thought, that's pretty weird for a city council to do. The most gracious explanation I could conceive of at the time was that the declaration was a simple knee-jerk reaction to get a bit of good press for condemning abject violence. At this point, though, I think it's fair to say that there's been ample opportunity for council members to become educated on the state of Israel's apartheid regime, their war crimes, and their human rights abuses over the better part of the last century. I'm limited to just a few minutes, so I can't go into detail about Israel's current murderous campaign of collective punishment and ethnic cleansing. However, I urge you to seek out the resources to help you arrive at an opinion that's informed by more than the warmongering of politicians and imperialist propaganda. I encourage any Zionists on and off the council to have the courage to really consider what you stand in support of. I don't believe anybody with a shred of humanity would knowingly support the continuous horrors inflicted on the children and the adults of Gaza. I urge you to reclaim your dignity by withdrawing your previous declaration and earn back your city's respect by acknowledging the full scope of Palestinian suffering and condemning Israel's abhorrent campaign of terror. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Ward, then Elizabeth, and then Dave M. is, will call in.
I'm unequivocally condemning the Spokane City Council for their October 9, 2023 resolution in support of the settler colonial apartheid state of Israel. The unanimously approved resolution is racist and historically illiterate and regurgitates the colonial narratives that are used to justify Israel's ongoing genocide against the Palestinian people. Resolution paints Palestinians as violent terrorists and Israel as an innocent nation just seeking to defend itself. The historical record mocks this characterization. This rhetoric is a key tool used by Israel and the United States in justifying the colonial Zionist project and the ongoing genocide against Palestine. Over 800 scholars of genocide and of the Holocaust have raised the alarm at Israeli officials fully espousing genocidal intent as they rain missiles down on a large concentration of civilians. The Israeli Defense Minister announced that all food, electricity, and fuel would be denied to 2.3 million people in Gaza, half of whom are children, and he called them animals. The Israeli Prime Minister called this "a battle between the children of light and the children of darkness" and referenced genocidal religious scripture as he turns Palestinians into rubble. Meanwhile, in the U.S., President Biden and corporate-backed media spread false atrocity propaganda about evil terrorists beheading babies without any evidence. Media outlets later had to retract this claim, but most people never heard the retraction. The U.S. ruling class Spokane City Council perpetuates these lies, and thus the racist narrative of violent and backwards Palestinians persists. We demand that the city council retracts the October 9 resolution and passes a new one, one that demands an end to all U.S. military and foreign aid to the state of Israel. Our tax dollars are funding genocide, occupation, and ethnic cleansing against the Palestinian people. Since October 7, 8,308 Palestinians have been killed in Gaza by Israeli airstrikes, including 3,400 children. Thousands more are trapped under the rubble. In the occupied West Bank, Israeli settlers have killed 114 Palestinians, 1,500 have been arrested, and that brings the number of political prisoners up to 10,000 Palestinians, including hundreds of children.
Scott, time's up.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, and then Dave M. and Laura Rens.
Good evening, council, and good evening to everyone here as well. I'm here to talk about water fluoridation. I think by now it's clear that it's a very controversial issue for our community. I believe clean water is a topic of the utmost importance as all living beings, human and other, rely upon it to thrive. People such as yourselves, when deciding to add anything to a community's water, should be fully committed to a complete understanding of implications of said decisions. When this was brought up in 2020, fluoridation supporters, but not opponents, had opportunity to present when all council members were present. That is not fair or balanced, and when Safe Water Spokane put on a free forum with top-notch experts, only one council member attended, to my understanding. Since then, there are new council members and new members incoming, so with any future discussions on the topic, I ask that the council ensure that opponents receive equal time to present their case. There is a serious question here, and that is, has fluoridation been proven safe for everyone? There is a significant body of scientific evidence that, that of both potential and known harm. It is for this reason that exists the current federal lawsuit against the EPA in which the court will rule on whether fluoridation is an unreasonable risk to human health. The final phase of that trial will start this coming January, and I ask that the council not raise this issue again until that case is decided upon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dave M.? Does he want to hit star three?
Dave, can you please hit star three?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening, council. It saddens me to say that you're the first to condemn and the last to console. I want to offer condolences for our mayor and her entire family with the loss of her mother, Marilyn, who passed away at the age of 81. Our thoughts and prayers go out to you, mayor, and family. This council has injected itself into the current election. This is election interference. You just spoke to that a second ago about not speaking for candidates, and yet the council has interjected themselves in candidates and propositions. Folks, if this council is against it, we need to be for it. We are one week away from Election Day, November 7. Please vote and get your ballots returned on time. It's time...
Go ahead.
This is talking about election and encouraging people to vote.
Yes, that's, yes. Go ahead, Dave.
You guys have encouraged people to vote. It's time for the good people of Spokane to elect common sense leaders who will support law enforcement and the entire Spokane community.
Now, you've gone over the line. Now, you've gone over the line. Thank you.
I don't think I have gone over the line.
Yes, I think you have, thank you.
No, I don't think I have.
Laura Rens?
I'm not meant...
Want to come down? Cut him off. And then Jessie Peterson, and then Khadeen... And then Jesse Peterson, and then Kadine Rockman.
Hello. Laura Rens here. I just wanted to talk about sidewalk safety, public safety. Councilwoman Dratton and I went for a walk a few months ago, and it was really eye-opening for everyone. Sidewalks are for pedestrians. They've gotten so full of wheels that it's really hard to walk around in the downtown core. Honestly, I would rather walk through Second and Brown. I feel a lot safer there than in the downtown core part because of the wheels. This poor dog here, she's terrorized by the scooters. But it's not just the scooters now. It's the scooters, the bicycles, those little skateboard things. So I went to the park yesterday, or day before yesterday, up in the pavilion, there were bicycles and those little scooters flying down the ramps. I'm like, oh, jeez, not here too. But, I mean, Spokane's a great city, and I don't have the solutions. I don't know what they are. I rack my brain all the time. But you guys are all, ladies are all really smart, and I know there are some solutions. I just don't know what they are. The scooters, it's not just the lime. It's all of them. They need to, they need to stay in their lane. But it's not just that they're running the disabled people off the sidewalk. It's the families. It's the people. It's everyone, and there needs to, there needs to be some way to, to help with the, with the pedestrian safety. So anyway, whatever you can come up with, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Jesse?
Jesse, if you're online, can you hit star three? Or, great.
Hello, I'm Jesse Peterson. I live and work in Spokane.
Could you speak into the microphone a little bit more?
Oh, I'm Jesse Peterson. I live and work in Spokane. I've worked in healthcare for almost 15 years now. I pay taxes, and I grew up in a Zionist household with family members with dual citizenship. And because of this, I'm actually very familiar with Israeli law regarding citizenship. Most of the citizens are required to comply with the law of conscription or fixed-term military service. So I know an intimate detail, as reported by my family, the atrocities that have been and continue to be committed in that region. This includes consistent international war crimes against Palestinian civilians in the name of Israeli nationalism. Sorry, it's hard to read this because my family, as having been conscripted, have taken part in this, and it is tearing our family apart, unfortunately. I stand against genocide in all its forms, as I would hope all of you do as well, and everybody here. Unfortunately, that's not always the case, so for whatever reason, it seems that money speaks louder than words or human compassion. And I'd like to point out that the state of Washington gives away over $118 million of taxpayer money to Israel every year. Spokane has been contributing 3.5 million alone every single year. This is money that should be used for hiring more teachers at fair wages, funding children's healthcare, or public housing for families, or anything else, really, aside from genocide or mass murder. So for these reasons, I'm asking that the city of Spokane withdraw all support from Israel and eventually, hopefully, offer our city as like a sanctuary city for Palestinians, if that ever comes to it. And I'm going to butcher this, but I'd like to offer and extend this for everybody in the city who is Palestinian or has family that is Palestinian. Min al nar, yee la chabar, setata charar filastin. From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free.
Thank you. And I'm going to butcher your name. I apologize. Kadine, Kadine Rockman, and then Zachary McGuckin, McGuckin, and Robert Richard.
Hello. My name is Kadine Rockman, and I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'm here tonight to speak on this council's recent resolution on the Palestinian-Israel conflict. This resolution is flat-out racist, colonial, ahistorical, and regurgitates the Zionist narratives that are used to justify Israel's ongoing genocide against the Palestinian people. The resolution asserts Israel's right to defend itself, but defend itself from what? Children throwing rocks? It's this in defense whatsoever. They are killing children. It's ethnic cleansing. It is an occupation that presses its boot on the necks of millions of colonized people daily, and it is Israel which is ultimately responsible for the violence that manifests as a result from its repression. Even the United Nations affirms the right of colonized and occupied people to arm resistance in their liberation struggle and the right of return to those who've been evicted from their land. Absent the Israel occupation that violently denies Palestinians the right to return, self-determination, and freedom, there would be no violence. This council had the perfect opportunity to condemn genocide, to condemn apartheid, to condemn oppression. But instead, this council has shown open support to murder of, the murder of thousands of innocent Palestinians, a lot of which are children. Is it, is that really what this council wants to represent? If not, then this council must retract their statement, and instead of making a statement in support of open apartheid and genocide, then make a statement directly condemning it, condemning Israel, condemning Zionism, and demanding the immediate end to all military aid to Israel. Thank you.
Thank you. Then Robert Richard, and then Marianne Torres.
Good evening, Council President. My name is Zachary McGuckin. I'm a Spokane City resident, and I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'm going to be speaking directly to you about the statements and behavior of a different council member a couple weeks ago. Two weeks ago, Councilmember Bingle attempted to silence my...
So, we don't...
So, I'm addressing you.
I know you are, but you're mentioning another council member.
Per the rules of the council, I can...
Yes.
...talk about other council members as long as I'm addressing you.
Please do not address him by name, or do not talk to him by name.
A council member attempted to silence my friend and comrade, David, stating that it was disrespectful and against quorum to call Israel an apartheid state. Perhaps why that council member truly took issue with David's statement was that it disproved many of the facts stated in that council member's pro-Israel statement. Regardless of what anyone on the council thinks, Israel has been recognized by the U.N. as an apartheid state, as well as an illegal occupation that's in violation of international law. The U.N. has also recognized the state of Israel as one of the number-one killers of children. The Gaza Strip, which Israel has dropped a bomb on every 90 seconds since declaring a siege in one of the most densely populated places in the world, had, this bombing has led to the death of over 3,000 children in these past two weeks. As long as our tax dollars continue to fund the Israeli occupation, the blood of those children are on your hands. Nearly $3.5 thousand of Spokane's tax revenue goes to the genocidal project of Israel. That money could provide healthcare for 1,000 children in our city instead of ending the lives of 3, around 3.5 thousand children abroad. Retract your statement in support of Israel and pass one condemning our military aid as a first step of getting that money to go to the people's needs, not the war machine. I cede the rest of my time.
Thank you, Zachary. Robert Richard, then Marianne Torres, and Quinn Childs.
Thank you, Council President, for having me, being able to speak tonight. I was here 16 October and heard Mr. Neville speak, and I thought I'd read the Veterans for Peace statement that they made, since I'm a member of Veterans for Peace and a member of the Green Party too, by the way. Spokane Veterans for Peace, having opposed the U.S. role in continuing violence in the Middle East for over 30 years, is compelled to comment upon your resolution regarding Hamas attacks against Israel. We appreciate, however, your speaking out on current international affairs, affecting the concerns, passions, and resources of local citizens. We understand that the need to express strong sentiments quickly, but urge you to avoid joining pronouncements that provide cover for clear bias or war profiteering. VFP's condemnations of violence often go unheard because we cannot support any side in a contest of mass murder. We grieve for every life taken by violent conflict. Because our yearning for peace and human rights is sometimes interpreted as anti-Semitism, we lack the platform our leaders might have to call for restraint, investigation, negotiation. We truly fear that the people of Israel, as well as the stateless inmates of Gaza, will suffer horribly from the military-based reaction to this misguided Hamas attack. It is war that is the enemy of humanity, whether we call it terrorism, anti-terrorism, invasion, or insurgency. Our experiences have led us to abandon any expectation that military violence will alleviate human suffering, or that choosing sides in international conflicts will establish justice. We are unheard by our federal representatives, who finance death and destruction as our default foreign policy. Please join us in calling for an immediate ceasefire to give all sides some hope for peace. With love and hope, Spokane Veterans for Peace. And I may add, or the vote of the Jordan, for the Jordan truce that passed last week...
Thank you. Your time is up.
Would be fine.
Thank you. Marianne? Quinn Childs and Terry Hill?
City Council, Marianne Torres, Spokane. I saw much of the brutal occupation during my own times in Palestine and Israel, and I beseech you to educate yourselves if you insist on taking sides in this or any conflict, as you have done. How is, I'm sorry, no longer should we speak of a conflict in which Palestinian resistance is criminalized and Israel's expansion through military means cast as its right of self-defense. How is self-defense defined as carpet bombing an area 25 miles long, 4 miles wide, filled with 2 million people who cannot escape this open-air prison? How is self-defense defined as bombing hospitals and civilians on the ground? How is self-defense defined as depriving 2 million people, half of them children, of food and water, water, electricity, and then ensuring that aid for those people dying of thirst and hunger cannot reach them? How is self-defense defined as 8,000 people dead in three weeks, half of them children? Is this what the city council intended to endorse with their ill-considered resolution? That resolution must be rescinded in the name of justice, and if council members wish to remain engaged in this horror, you surely must educate yourselves so that you can at least understand the reality on the ground and stand on the right side of history.
Thank you. Quinn Childs, Terry Hill, and then Azalan Croft.
Hello. My name is Quinn Childs.
You can pull that down. There you go.
My name is Quinn Childs, and I'm here today to ask that you retract your statement in support of Israel. The war crimes and the genocide has been clearly stated here tonight, and I ask that you all educate yourselves. There have been, sorry, one moment. There have been many atrocities committed, and I would just like you all to properly educate yourselves before taking a stance and know where you should stand and where the people of Spokane support. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Hill, Azalan Croft, and Russell Webster.
Terry Hill, longtime Spokane resident. Terry Truman once said, "Never kick a fresh turd on a hot day." I don't know what temperature was on your, the day you passed your resolution, but I wish you luck cleaning your shoes.
Thank you. Azalan and Russell Webster, then Derek Azaro.
Assalamualaikum, members of City Council, Council President. My name is Azalan, and I'm a member of the Spokane Muslim community with strong connections to Palestinians through friends and family. I am here on behalf of my community to ask you to please revise the Resolution 0091 on Israel. The media frequently misrepresent support for Palestine as support for terrorism. I promise I'm not a terrorist. I'm a teacher, someone who loves animals, going to the mall, and going to bed early. My Muslim sisters in Spokane teach how to weave baskets, be good members, and raise children to be kind to their teachers. Across our nation, there is a rise in hate crimes against Muslims and Palestinians. A six-year-old boy in Chicago was stabbed to death by a hateful bigot who learned to hate Muslims because of the news. And if you read the comments on Spokane News, you will see hundreds of comments calling for us to be deported, imprisoned, and even killed, too. The current resolution must change so we don't feel bias and hatred against my community. It is a one-sided narrative without our voices. It is historically inaccurate, and the language is rooted in white supremacy. The resolution ignores the Nakba, the 75 years of apartheid and forced displacement of indigenous Palestinians. I would be remiss in not acknowledging our presence on the stolen lands of the indigenous Spokane people. In order for Israel and the United States to exist, indigenous people must be violently removed through ethnic cleansing and genocide. Why should our tax dollars fund this? Many members of my community would love to help you revise this resolution. We are often overlooked. Many of us speak English as a second or third language and struggle navigating American systems. Nevertheless, they have been waiting to tell you their stories. Please also join me in calling for an end to the horrific violence in Gaza. Ceasefire now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Russell Webster, Derek Azaro, and Raoul Pina.
Hello. My name is Russell Webster. I'm a resident of the city of Spokane. I ask that you rescind the shameful resolution you passed recently in support of Israel, and I ask that you apologize to Palestinians in the city of Spokane. To provide some context, what I'm sure you weren't aware of, Gaza used to be referred to as the largest open-air prison in the world. British broadcaster Lauren Booth recently corrected us on that description because prisons are places where criminals are held. Gaza is home to millions of Palestinians, women, children, and men, who have not been convicted of any crimes. Prisons provide food, water, security, healthcare, education, visitation, due date to leave. Israel restricts all of that. Gaza is more appropriately, by definition, a concentration camp. People are oppressed by external forces, caged, killed, and tortured. It's been going on for decades now. You all know this. They're caged and killed for their political and religious beliefs and their ethnicity. It's an important fact. Following the Israeli raid in February this year, the AP reported that at least 55 Palestinians were killed by Israeli forces in East Jerusalem and the West Bank, which put 2023 on a path to surpass the 150 Palestinians killed in 2022. In absence of a peace process, several states in the Middle East warned repercussions that could ripple through the region. We are today witnessing those repercussions. Violence is spreading beyond Palestine. U.S. and Israel are currently bombing Syria and Jordan. This is a serious affair right now. In a 1997 speech on the International Day of Solidarity with the Palestinian People, Nelson Mandela said, "We know too well that our freedom is incomplete without the freedom of the Palestinians." And Mandela wasn't just talking about South Africans. He was talking about all of us.
Time is up.
Free Palestine.
Thank you.
Before I speak, I'd like to ask a question from the Council President. I'm not allowed to ask the council members any questions, but can I ask Mr. Wright a question?
No.
No?
You can ask him, but he won't answer.
Okay. So my question is, I'd like to have the definition of hate speech.
We'll have to do that offline.
You can't answer. I know. I came here tonight because, on the subject of the Rainbow Crosswalk in Spokane, it's now pretty much put out there through, you know, political events that it now represents, to me, you know, the community, is it's a hate flag. Speaking on that, the amount of money that was spent on that crosswalk was roughly $17,000. Speaking on that, the amount of money that was spent on that crosswalk was roughly $17,000. It's part of a traffic calming project. My question is, I'd like a definition of that $17,000 on the paint that was spent on it. It turns out it was highly specialized paint. It was in a location that I challenged that it was an actual traffic calming location. It went through a vetting process. Was that vetting process actually done correctly in terms to the traffic calming program? I myself have spent almost, going on three now, three years now, fighting for crosswalks, sidewalks, flashing signs, everything in our neighborhood in District One around the Denny Usher Jr. High School. Everything's been denied, 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 denied. But $17,000 been put on a rainbow crosswalk, put in front of basically a business, and there's no hate intended toward that. But if I was a barber shop right there, and I want, you know, a barber sign put out there on that crosswalk, I don't think that'd be right because this is a traffic calming issue. So I'm asking for the council and the administration to do a full investigation of the money spent and whether or not it was vetted or not, and the whole entire process behind that project. I really don't feel that it was actual traffic calming location. If it's found that all of that is true, I'd like to have the city have that $17,000 put back into the traffic calming fund because now the entire District One is now fighting with every single neighborhood council for that money to put in a crosswalk in their neighborhoods, which probably could be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Raoul, and Melanie, and then Andrea.
My name is Raoul Pena. I live in Spokane. I stand up for the pledge of allegiance. I see a lot of people turning their backs on this flag, and that's really disturbing, knowing that me and countless other veterans gave up our lives. We gave service to this country to have individuals here condemn you all because of a war that we ain't got nothing to say about. People here acknowledge the fact that it's all right to kill innocent babies. They claim that Israel's doing that. Hamas did this to Israel. These individuals gonna stand up and turn their backs. Go ahead. It's your right to do that because me as a veteran and everybody else had died to give you this right. Don't condemn the council here. Look inside your hearts. Find out what the truth is. The truth is that Hamas did what they did, and they butchered, they killed, they raped. Don't be pointing fingers at somebody because look at your hand, there's three fingers pointing right back at you. I came up here for one specific reason, but I was sitting in the back and I'm watching this display from individuals. I came here to talk about crosswalks. Kids in my neighborhood have to dodge cars. And you know who drives them cars? Mothers are two ladies that wake their kids up in time to feed them, and they gotta haul ass, excuse my language, they gotta haul through the neighborhood, my neighborhood, to dump their kids out, to have teachers teach them whatever they teach. But I'm here to support. I need the council to look at the crosswalks where kids need to be safe crossing, not dodging cars. Thank you.
Melanie and Andrea.
Hi. My name's Melanie Perry. I'm a citizen in Spokane. I've lived here my whole life. You know, I'm not, I don't really have a plan of what I wanted to say, really. I just know that I can't stay quiet in like the face of genocide, which is what is going on right now in Gaza. I mean, we're right to condemn Hamas and the attacks that happened previously, but there are 2 million people who live in that very small strip of land. They are being bombed constantly. Babies are crying. People are losing whole families. It is just traumatizing and horrible, and there's nowhere for them to go, no one to help, and no one seems to care. And it's just heart-wrenchingly horrible, and I just cannot stay quiet. I need to say something. I need to know that we're not crazy, that Palestine needs to be free, that the people deserve their freedom, and they deserve to live without this fear and be constantly attacked. I'm sorry. Palestine, free Palestine. Thank you.
Andrea.
Andrea, if you're online, can you hit star three?
She doesn't say she is. Okay. Right. So let's move into our legislative session. Ms. Fister, do you want to read the consent agenda, please?
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, preapproval to purchase one Ford F-150 Lightning for engineering services, not to exceed $60,000, including commissioning and tax. Number two, personal service agreements to provide towing services for the Fleet Services Department from November 1, 2023 through November 1, 2028 with A. Evergreen State Towing LLC Spokane as a primary source, not to exceed $65,000 annually, plus tax applicable. B. Andrews Enterprises Incorporated Doing Business as Reliable Towing East Spokane Valley, Washington as a secondary source, not to exceed $10,000 annually, plus tax applicable. Number three, Spokane Airport Board 2024 Budget. Number four, setting the hearings and review of the 2024 proposed budget for Monday, November 13, 2023, and Monday, November 20, 2023. Number five, set hearing for November 6, 2023, for the citywide capital improvement program 2024 through 2029. Number six, assistance awards in accordance with the approved tranche III of ARPA allocation Small Business Assistance Awards, round two to 55 local small businesses, $1,403,517.35. Number seven, consultant agreement with Kaufman Engineers Spokane for surveying on-call services non-federal from November 1, 2023 to December 31, 2025, not to exceed $250,000 of various neighborhoods. Number eight, consultant agreement with Westland Resources Incorporated Doing Business as Westland Engineering and Environmental Services Incorporated Spokane for Historic Resources On-Call Services Non-Federal for 2024 to 2025, not to exceed $300,000. Number nine, reported the mayor pending claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through October 2023. Total $17,279,613.29 with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $16,691,011.71. Number 10, city council meeting minutes for October 16, 2023.
Ms. Fister. Number three, we have the council sponsor as president begs. How do you want to handle that?
Oh, for heaven's sake. Sorry.
Oopsie.
Who is that?
Yeah, thank you. I think it was you.
Can you just substitute me for that?
Sorry.
Thank you. All right. We have one person signed up, Will Huelings.
Will? I haven't, I'm gonna go get him.
He's back there.
No.
Will, can you hear us? No.
Will?
No. Yeah. Come on.
My name is Will Huelings, and I am with Spokane GOP. How about that? But anyways, what I want to talk about is something that I've spoke out before about these electric vehicles. So the engineering services needs a Ford F-150 Lightning. For what reason? I mean, for about $30, say about $30,000, they could get a brand-new F-150 that may not be fancy like this Lightning, and that would save the city some money because they are public servants. They do work. I mean, it's crazy to think that people that work for the city have nicer cars than normal citizens. I can't afford a Ford Mach-E. I can't afford a Ford F-150 because they cost about 60 grand. Then on top of the chargers that you need to charge them, I mean, maybe they have that figured out. But as I spoke about a few weeks ago about Water Department having Ford Mach-Es, you know, one was parked out front, you know? I find that kind of alarming. And you guys are all okay with that because the governor said that we all got to drive electric vehicles by 2030, whatever the reason is. But I just, I find it just crazy because, first off, it's almost October. If you haven't did your research, you know, just like your cell phones, lithium ion, they lose half the charge in the wintertime. Just do it. You can go out there, you know, when it gets colder in the 30s. You'll see what I'm talking about. Same thing with these electric vehicles. Anyways, I just want you guys to spend that money maybe on public safety. You know, there's been a lot of drug overdoses. I mean, I spoke about that, or read a long list of different crimes that are happening. And now just to know that they might not be able to book them because there's overcrowding and all that, you get people up here talking about, I mean, that's another subject. But as far as this Lightning, I'm not for this. Anyways, thank you.
Great. And council commentary? Great. All those in, what is, this is, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Good. Thank you. And Terry, next.
Ordinance C 36453, amending ordinance number C 36345, passed by the city council December 12, 2022, and entitled. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2023, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency in appropriating funds in ordinance, excuse me, miscellaneous grants fund. Number one, increased revenue by $200,000. A of the increased revenue, $200,000, is provided by the Washington Traffic Safety Commission as part of the impaired driving strategic plan. Number two, increased appropriation by $200,000. A of the increased appropriation, $118,000, is provided solely for procurement of drug and alcohol tests. B of the increased appropriation, $30,000, is provided solely for services to provide assistance for ignition interlock systems. C of the increased appropriation, $35,000, is provided solely for evaluation services. D of the increased appropriation, $17,000, is provided for other miscellaneous program expenses. This action arises from the need to accept the Washington Traffic Safety Commission's grant funding for the impaired driving strategic plan.
We don't have anyone signed up. Council commentary? All right. Prepare to vote. Very good. Seven oh, thank you. And next, Terry.
Resolution 2023-89 relating to modification of the city of Spokane's retail water service area, RWSA, to include Spokane County parcel numbers 26213.0501, 24073.0110, 36352.9005, 26212.0609, 24182.0105, 24051.9009, 24051.9076, and 24051.9089, and authorizing the amendment of the city's RWSA map on file with the Washington State Department of Health, deferred from October 16, 2023 agenda.
Thank you. Don't have anybody signed up. Eldon's here. Eldon Brown is here. Do any of you want to ask him questions? No? Okay. Any council commentary?
Yes.
Councilmember Bingle.
I just wanted to thank the county parks director for showing up today, and the one that was outside of the UGA is a park that we decided we wanted to approve. And some of our questions were, can you assure us that this will remain a park because we're happy to provide water if it remains a park? The county showed up with a great presentation and assured us that this will remain a park in its perpetuity. And I appreciate that they did that, and I think it's going to be great for the area, so.
And in addition, the, as I said, I spoke with Commissioner French.
Yes.
He's very enthusiastic about this. And if the council who remains after the 28th of November decides to go forward and create an MOU or in perpetuity after we approve this, you can do so if you're at all nervous about how long this will last. So it's all up to you at that point. Okay. Any other council commentary? Go ahead.
Yeah. Also grateful they came and answered those questions, but just really want to make sure and thank Eldon for all of his hard work and for staying yet again late into the evening when he didn't have to do that. So thank you, Eldon.
Yes. We appreciate you, Eldon. Okay. All right. Prepare to vote. Thank you. Seven oh. All right. Next, Terry.
Resolution 2023-90 relating to modification of the city of Spokane's retail water service area, RWSA, to include Spokane County parcel number 24181.9060, and authorizing the amendment of the city's RWSA map on file with Washington State Department of Health, deferred from October 16, 2023 agenda.
Okay. Again, we don't have anybody signed up. Any council commentary? All right. Prepare to vote. Seven oh, thank you. And next, Terry.
Resolution 2023-93, declaring clean energy, doing business as Clean Energy Corporation Newport Beach, California, a sole-source provider, and authorizing the city to enter into a contract for repairs and maintenance of the city of Spokane Clean Natural Gas Refueling Station to be used on an as-needed basis for a five-year period, one year with four optional one-year renewals, approximately $250,000 annually without public bidding.
Okay. We have one person signed up. Dave M., do you want to hit star three?
Go ahead, Dave. You're unmuted.
Thank you, Jacoby. I have a question regarding this, and, you know, we always talk about source local by local. I'm just wondering why we are hiring a corporation out of Newport Beach, California, as opposed to a corporation within our own state, maybe within our own city? That's mainly what my question is regarding this. And I just want to clarify that I was not speaking on any candidate or any proposition or resolution when I spoke earlier. But I do think it would be nice if we could find and keep our money within, at least within our state, if not within our city, for these kind of contracts. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Okay. Any council commentary? Remember, we do a bidding process, and we go through a very rigorous process. So usually, the low bidder gets the job, and if there isn't anybody in the city or the state, then we are forced to go elsewhere, which is what we've done here. So, yes.
And I would also add that it's a sole-source provider.
There we go.
Yeah. That makes a difference, too.
Yes, it does.
If you providers that are out there.
Exactly. Yes. Thank you. Any other council commentary? All right. Yes?
I was getting ready.
Oh, okay. Prepare to vote. Thank you. Seven oh. And first reading ordinances, Terry.
Ordinance C 36454 relating to the waiver of certain permitting fees for solar energy systems and electric vehicle charging stations set forth in the Spokane Municipal Code and adding fees in amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 8.02.031, 8.02.034, 15.05.040, and 15.05.050.
Okay. We don't have anybody signed up. Do you want to continue on?
Okay. Ordinance C 36455, adopting a six-year citywide capital improvement program for the years 2024 through 2029, and amending the citywide capital improvement program as referenced in Appendix C of the city of Spokane comprehensive plan.
Oh, Jacob, you want to come up?
And Jessica.
And Jessica? Yeah. Come on up. Come on up.
Revenue.
Yeah.
Do you want me to read the last ordinance?
Did you have a presentation for us? Yeah.
Yeah, I thought you were talking about.
Just a second. Do you want me to read the last ordinance? I didn't read the last.
Okay, sure.
Okay.
Ordinance C 36456 relating to budget planning and budget presentations and amending Section 7.14.030 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
Okay. Presentation.
And did you want me to read?
All right, so I'll be presenting on, my name is Jacob Miller. I am a budget analyst and I work in the budget office for the city.
Do you want to raise that up a little bit? There's a button right there on your right.
The nineteen seventies quarter, right there. There it is.
There we go. Look at that. There we go.
Much better, thank you.
Absolutely. So I'll be talking about revenues in the twenty twenty-four proposed budget that will be delivered to you all this Thursday, November second. What I'll talk about throughout the presentation are upcoming hearings and other key dates. I'll give an overview of the general fund revenues in the twenty twenty-four proposed budget, and then we'll dig a little deeper into the components of that. Looking at upcoming key dates, like I said, we have the proposed budget being delivered this Thursday, November second, twenty twenty-three. We have upcoming budget hearings on the thirteenth, twentieth, thirteenth and twentieth of November, followed by budget adoption on the twenty-seventh of November, at least as it's currently planned. And then other key dates upcoming, we have the property tax ordinance on November thirteenth and the CIP ordinance next week on November sixth. So moving on to revenues in the twenty twenty-four budget, this is the general fund as a whole with some components, the major components being several taxes, property taxes, retail sales tax, city utility taxes, and private utility taxes. In total, we have growth in the general fund revenues by, from two hundred and twenty-eight point nine million in the twenty twenty-three adopted budget to two hundred and forty-three point six million in the twenty twenty-four proposed budget. That's an increase of six point four percent overall. Most of the categories are growing somewhat modestly. The largest growth is in that other category, which isn't very descriptive, so we'll dig into that a little bit further on this next slide. So we have all those taxes collapsed down into that first row. It's the majority of the revenue in the general fund. But items in the other category include licenses and permits, intergovernmental revenue, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, miscellaneous revenue, which is primarily interest earnings on our city's portfolio, and then other revenues is generally transfers in from other funds. So if we look at the growth, we looked at taxes, those are growing. Licenses, lights, licenses and permits are increasing to seven point three million from seven point one million. Intergovernmental revenues are decreasing by about four hundred thousand overall. This is primarily due to moving the cannabis use tax from the general funds to another new dedicated fund. If we look down at the other revenues, we have a transfer in from that new fund. So the transfer is five hundred thousand dollars for police set by the change you all made. So in a sense, it's just moved from one line to another. Beyond that, charges for services increasing to twenty-two point seven million, mostly due to law enforcement services provided. And then others, fines and forfeitures, increasing that seven hundred thousand dollars we talked about for police is in there at the meeting last week. Okay, so moving on to property tax. By law, the city is limited to increasing property taxes by one percent each year. That's using the prior year's levy as a basis. So we increase by one percent if inflation is not less than that value. So in this case, we're limited to one percent plus new construction taxes from the prior year. This year, the twenty twenty-four proposed budget will include that one percent, so we won't have to kind of balance the, will we or will we not have one percent in the So if we look at our twenty twenty-four levies, we have our city regular levy, our public safety levy, and that is a levy lid lift, so it's technically part of the regular levy, but we split it out for visibility. Then we have the fire and EMS levy below that, and our two bond levies. The top three are subject to that one percent limit on the increase each year, whereas the bottom two are just defined by our debt service schedule. So those are a little bit different. But if we look at the levy rate in total, in twenty twenty-three, that was two point nine eight eight, two point nine nine, and in twenty twenty-four, it's decreasing down to two point nine one seven. The reason that this happens is that we have that one percent limit on our levy. So it increases by one percent and new construction, they're usually about the same amount, so two percent we'll say. If our citywide property values in total increase by more than that, the levy rate will go down. That's basically the simplest way to put it. And in that case, this is what has occurred. Citywide values have increased about four point two five percent from thirty-three point seven billion to thirty-five point two billion in twenty twenty-three. So our total overall property tax revenue is increasing from one hundred point six million to one hundred and two point four million. So I'll give a little bit of a simple example as far as how this impacts the taxpayers. What does this look like for them? The top example is just a zero percent increase, four hundred thousand dollar home in last year's value and this year's value. Because the levy rate decreased, their property tax bill would decrease by twenty, twenty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. If their property value grew by the same percent as citywide values grew, their bill would increase twenty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. So it just kind of gives you a sense of scale of what we're working with here. Looking at the historical property tax revenue, we have the general fund portion in blue on the bottom and other funds in green on the top. And you can see in twenty twenty, we had that large jump in the other funds portion. That's that public safety levy lid lift. That did not impact the general fund, so that continued on as it was while the other funds jumped accordingly. Moving on to sales tax, right now, the city of Spokane has a nine percent sales tax, so I'll talk about the components of that. And then I'll break down the history of our one percent city sales tax and then point out the impact of inflation on that sales tax revenue. So the majority of our nine percent sales tax is for the state of Washington. That's six point five percent and does not have a termination date. The city of Spokane has a one percent sales tax. Fifteen percent of that goes to the county, so it's kind of like we have a point eight five percent sales tax, but it's listed as one percent. Point eight percent is for the Spokane Transit Authority, and then we have a bunch of other one-tenth of one percent sales taxes beneath that. Some of those have expiration dates, some do not. The city of Spokane receives a portion of the criminal justice line and the public safety and health. The county distributes some of that to the cities based on their population. And then we have our city affordable housing, one-tenth of one percent at the bottom. So we have a graph of sales tax revenue history for the general fund. And you can see the bold blue line there, those are historical actuals with twenty-three and twenty-four being budgeted items. And the green line, that's relatively straight, that's a three percent increase just as a measure to compare. And then the purple line is an inflation-adjusted line, so it takes the CPIU, the urban edition of the Consumer Price Index, and adjusts down for that inflation impact so that we can see the true value of our sales tax revenues. And you can see the impacts of the two thousand eight financial crisis there. We peaked in two thousand seven and then downhill from there for four years. And then we steadily climb up and the pandemic hits, and things look bad, but if you continue the trend, it's really like it just paused. You know, we had pent-up demand in theory and that corrected itself in the end of the tail end of that. As we get into twenty-three and four, we can see it start to plateau if we're looking at the actuals, the blue line. But if you look at the inflation-adjusted line, really, it's not a plateau, it's a somewhat sharp decline in sales tax revenue. So, you know, while it might look like things are increasing a lot, I think it's important to keep in mind that what we can purchase with that revenue is declining over time. All right, so the last two items are our city utility tax revenue and our private utility tax revenue. In the twenty twenty-four budget, city utility taxes are four point six percent greater than the twenty twenty-three adopted budget. Most of this is due to a temporary increase in our utility tax rate from twenty to twenty-one percent. I don't believe there's an end date assigned to that yet, but it's intended to be temporary. And then our private utility tax revenue is increasing this year by five point eight percent, primarily due to natural gas tax revenue. So the services provided by the city that are taxed, water and electric, sewer, stormwater, integrated capital, and solid waste. And then our private utilities that are taxed are electric, garbage, natural gas, and telephone and cable. So looking at the city utility tax revenue, relatively stable growth. We had that dip in twenty twenty for the pandemic. People were not paying their bills or unable to pay, and I know that we had some assistance programs to help them out, so I don't know the status of all of that at this point, but anyway, that's what was occurring at that point in time. And then private utilities is a little more interesting. You can see that in twenty twenty-four, we have the revenue of twenty-five point eight million in the proposed budget. And the last time we were at that point or greater approximately was twenty seventeen, so we finally crested that. The reason for this is the fact that presumably landline use has been declining over time. We know that. So our utility tax revenue from the sale of those services has gone down. And just recently, I mean, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, we have natural gas tax revenue outpacing that, basically. So we're back on the rise. And just to kind of give a visual to our telephone utility taxes over time, just we have our historical actuals into the twenty-three adopted budget. I think we're starting to plateau. I mean, everyone who wants, doesn't want their landline probably doesn't have it anymore. So that seems to be declining, I think, in the twenty twenty-three actual tax revenue. I think that'll be a little bit above our adopted budget, so hopefully that plateaus here. And that concludes a presentation on revenues in the twenty twenty-four proposed budget. Again, we'll be releasing that on Thursday. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions for Jake? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Informative, as always, appreciate it. Okay, so Terry, do you want to read the H one, please?
H one, hearing for possible revenue sources for the twenty twenty-four budget.
Thanks. And we do have Dave M. on the phone. Do you want to hit star three, please?
You're unmuted.
Hello, council. I may not have this right. Is this regarding what was just spoke on, property tax?
It's the hearing for our budget. Okay, so this is not what was just spoken about, the property tax increase, then? Part of it is, yes.
Okay. Well, my comment would be that in the last three years since twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, our property tax assessment was overinflated by the assessor's office by approximately a hundred thousand dollars per four hundred thousand dollar value in property. We don't need a tax increase. What we need is tax relief. The problem with the sales tax not being as high as projected is because people don't have the money to go out and spend because the property tax inflation was overinflated. So I would be against raising property taxes at this time. That's all I have to say on it. Thank you, council. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. And Terry, are we, do we need a motion to close the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Super. And we do not need to vote on this? It's, we're done?
No. And the ordinance, is there an ordinance coming? In November.
In November, yes. Okay, good. Anything for the good of the order? All right, we are adjourned. We'll see you back here November sixth. Please go out to the Chase Gallery if you want to speak. Councilmember Stratton is going to be filming in here, the council recap, so we need to vacate the space. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Thanks for your.